Okay, we're trying to see if we have a quorum for the DDA. Can someone tell me?
What's the question?
If we have a quorum for the DDA, I don't want to call the meeting to order, out of order.
I thought we were just here at your request. This is your meeting. We were just here at your request. This is not a DDA meeting.
And actually Bobby, at one point was going to be the only one that might come.
So you didn't call your board to this meeting?
We did, but it...
I got an invitation to come. I think it was called.
It's not a call meeting for you?
No.
Oh, well, we can just move right ahead.
But it's three others, so...
But we are down one, in fact, they all don't know it yet, but Mike Newcomb, effect of 1-1, he's resigned, so we are down a board member, so we're gonna have trouble meeting our own quorum.
Okay, alright, well then, I thought it was a call meeting from you two. I didn't know.
No, I thought we were just here for your benefit.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. I'll call this meeting to order. I want to say Happy New Year to all of you, each one individually and collectively. It's good to be back at work again, and pray that you had a prosperous and joyous holiday season and that will continue throughout the new year. We have asked our body to come together. And according to this, there will be a joint call meeting with the Fort Valley Main Street Downtown Development Authority, a component of the unit of the city of Fort Valley. And the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the intergovernmental note receivable in the amount of $136,075 due to the utility commission from the Main Street Downtown Development Authority. Before we enter into any kind of conversation with that, I'm going to ask our mayor if she would invoke the Holy Spirit into this body for us, please.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning thanking you for all the blessings of your love. We thank you for a great ending of 2014, and we ask your blessings upon all that we do in 2015. Bless both of these bodies and for what they do for your people. As we enter into this meeting to talk about issues that would deal with both bodies, we ask that you guide our minds, guide our thoughts throughout this process. Be with us is our prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I will at this time call the floor to discussion of our purpose of meeting. Once again, it is to discuss the intergovernmental note receivable from the DDA, Fort Valley Main Street Downtown Development Authority, in the amount of $136,136,075. I see your hand, Manager Dan.
Madam Chair, good morning. Happy New Year to everybody. Our attorney, Attorney Joel Bentley, is well versed with this situation. He and I have discussed some options. At this time, I would like to ask Attorney Bentley to discuss those options and put those on the table for discussion.
Well, for the benefit of the DDA, the reason this has concord is, we had some discussions at our meeting in December about how to caption the note that we now own where the DDA pledged support for a project that failed to a bank. The DDA note was purchased by the utility commission, and the note has matured, and the note has not been put on a new repayment plan or re-amortized. As you recall, we had a meeting several months ago where the DDA indicated that it would look to liquidate assets in order to pay the money owed to the utility commission. And at that time, the DDA was going to look into properties for appraisal purposes and also look at the inventory of properties that it owned, determine which properties might be available for sale for purposes of repaying this note. As we're all aware, this is, in essence, a circular loan, in that previously, the DDA was funded in part by the utility commission with a direct transfer. For this fiscal year upcoming, the city and the utility commission have changed how that aspect of their agreement works, in that the utility commission makes a straight transfer of cash funds to the city, and then the city takes care of the funding for the DDA. So, to repay this loan, the DDA either has to use taxpayer money in the form of Avalorm taxes or other tax funds that it receives from the city, or the note has to be paid or forgiven by the utility commission, at which point the utility commission is passing the cost on to utility customers. I don't know of the DDA having any independent source of income. So, at this point, we'd like to ask the DDA, have they come up with a plan to pay the utility commission note? Is there anything out there that the DDA can offer to the utility commission to show that this note will be paid in fiscal year 2015?
Yeah. You'll receive a letter from August the 14th outlining our plan.
Right.
We're still implementing this plan.
Okay.
So we really don't have anything else to announce, other than we do have some appraisals now on some properties and...
Well, we would like for you to consider the following. The DDA note is, was on a three-year amortization schedule. It matured. We would like to re-amortize that loan and have the DDA enter into a payment plan of some sort. We would also like for the DDA to pledge property as collateral for that loan. Currently, the loan is uncollateralized, it's just a callable note without any security. We do not know what the DDA's other financial obligations are to the public. I'd have to defer to the DDA attorney to determine whether or not it has any property that would be free and clear to serve as collateral for the loan. And the DDA and utility commission could determine whether recollateralizing this loan would require quarter, annual payments, monthly payments, annual payments, or just payments of interest alone and not principal. All that's subject to negotiation. But the two key features are, is the first option that we have is to ask you to collateralize this note and also put it on a payback schedule versus just sitting still as it is. The reason for that is, as Pat can tell you, we had an issue with our audit to determine whether or not we considered this to be a bad debt. We had not called the note due, we're not calling the note due, but we do need to put it on a payment schedule so that we can properly put it on our account. It's non-functioning at this point, so we just want it to have some type of functioning. Also, because of, you know, any other obligations you might have out there, we want collateralized, so you can pick out whatever properties you want, or whatever are free and clear, that we could have first lien position along to the tune of roughly $140,000, and I believe we'd be satisfied with that. And then you can sell properties at your leisure, get partial releases of the lien, things of that nature. Frankly, the other options are a little more drastic, of course, understanding that the DDA is an independent entity of the utility commission, an independent entity legally of the city. That note is due, it is past due. The utility commission could take a more radical approach and obtain a judgment on that note. Have no desire to do that, that would certainly be an option. At one point, the city, the utility commission had talked about transferring the note to the city, and I'm not sure that the city is necessarily in favor of receiving that The utility commission could be asked by the DDA to forgive the note. Nobody's done that at this point. I'm not sure what the utility commission's position would be on a straight forgiveness of that note. But this matter was brought to your attention in August. I understand that you're working on it. However, given the problems that it's caused, the utility commission, and it's odd, you know, we have to do something with this note at this time. It can't just sit the way it sits.
Alright, you've heard the options before us. I'm gonna ask Bobby, his chair.
Well, lie down, we've already set our budget for the year. I don't know where we're gonna come up with any repayment money for a note. If we'd have known that maybe ahead of time, we could have put that in our budget.
What is your budget here, Bobby?
Same as the city's.
What is that?
September 1 through, or October 1 through September 30.
But Kathy, don't you need to speak for just a few minutes on an update?
Sure. Our meeting is tomorrow night, and what you proposed, we can put it on our agenda for tomorrow evening. We have gotten appraisals on most of our buildings that are real buildings that are We do owe notes on some of them, so even selling them might not put us in a position to pay back. What we did, what did cause a little bit of delay was getting all of these appraisals, and then what we did was, the people that are in the building, we offered the building to them at a fair market value of the appraisal value for 45 days, and they had 45 days to respond. One of them has responded no. The other one still has a few days left. I don't anticipate that at all either. This, the building downtown, which we refer to as Nina's Beauty Supply, we don't have a note on that building. The appraisal came in at $80,000, which we extended an offer. The other building that we offered to the tenant is the Signal Building where Clark Insurance is. We offered that at $66,000, and she has responded no. I've been in touch with Marion Allen Realtor. He is coming tomorrow evening, because this was our procedure to do this at the first of the year after we got all these in place. So you caught us a day early. That's all I can say.
What's the third appraisal, Kathy?
The third appraisal is the Low Street, and that came in at $95,000.
Is that the Railroad Depot?
Yes. And that is going on the market in January. Roddy came by this month, and we discussed it. He's offered us to market our buildings at 5%, which is excellent for commercial property. There's some that he thinks could go right away, but like I said, we do have a note on some of our buildings, so we have to satisfy notes first. This one here is free and clear.
Which one?
The Passenger Depot.
What is that?
It's $95 for the appraisal.
What is that, same as the Railroad Depot, or is that a different one?
The 117 Low Street, which is the Passenger Depot. That's what I referred to as.
Okay, help me make sure I know who...
The Signal Building, it's a two-story building where Clark is, right at the River Drive.
Okay, that's $66,000.
Yes.
Okay, Nina is on Main Street.
Right.
Right.
That's $80,000.
Correct.
And which...
The realtor thought was high on that, but...
What is $95,000?
The Long Passenger Depot.
Passenger Depot. And that's free and clear? Right next by Fred's, oh, closer to Fred's.
Right now.
Free and clear. Oh, right next to the, right next to the Clark's Market?
Yes, ma'am.
That was $95,000. Of these three appraisals, do you have appraisals on anything else?
We have, we elected not to do an appraisal on Giles Garage. We went with a Realtor appraisal. That's the building that's right next door to the truck and house.
I know where Giles Garage is.
And that, approximately $64,800 on that.
Okay, what else?
I thought it was appraisal.
That's all we have.
Okay, what about the old high school?
The old high school, we did not get an appraisal. We have a plan on that, which is a little different. To market that building, we, it's a mess, so what we've decided to do is to invite people to come through it. We need to clean it up a little bit, so we're gonna do a video to try and raise some money to clean it out. Pathway, not super clean, but put, ply it up on the windows, like should have been done years ago, raise some money for that, raise some money to clean it out, and then we have a, we're gonna do a weekend hard hat day where we invite public-private partnerships in. And Roddy said he will go through that building too. But we did not get a formal appraisal, because it is, right now, it's tough to walk through it. Didn't you say it's not even safe to walk through? It's, no, it's not environmentally safe. I mean, I don't think the floors won't fall in or anything, that's not that bad. It's just the pigeons are still flying around, and the pigeon is in very bad areas. Behind the stage is really, really bad, so...
I'm trying to get the five properties identified that you noted in your August 14th letter.
Okay.
So help me do that, please.
That's the high school.
The high school would be property number five.
Right, no formal appraisal, but we do have a plan on it.
Because you did say in your letter in August that you were gonna appraise five properties with your plan to repay this note.
Right, but we walked through the building, and at that time, we felt it wasn't good to get it appraised.
We wouldn't want to spend the money on that one at that time.
It would be $1,700, that one would be. I did get a price on it. It was $1,200 for all the other ones, $1,700 for that.
$1,700 cost of the appraisal?
Mm-hmm.
So, the five buildings are Nina's, Clark's, Old High School, Railroad Depot on Low Street, and Giles Garage.
Correct.
Okay, and you have appraisals on everything except the old high school?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Nina's was number one.
Nina's is $80,000. Clark's is $66,000. Is it top secret that we could have a copy of the appraisal? Is that asking too much, or am I out of order? I don't want to put us in any at-risk situation here.
No, it's public documents.
Yes.
Okay.
What about the Austin? What about the Austin Theater, Kathy?
We didn't get it appraised right now. We're struggling to keep it operating.
So that would be property number six that is available to collateralize this?
There is a note on it.
Okay, what is free and clear?
The Passenger Depot.
The Passenger Depot.
117 Low Street.
117 Low Street.
Giles Garage, we don't anything on that, do we?
No, we don't.
So Giles Garage and the Passenger Depot would be the two properties that could collateralize this loan at this point?
Good.
That would be free and clear.
Or any number of combinations to equal $136,000.
Well, we don't want to encumber in our debt, so...
I have a question again. I guess I didn't hear very well. There were two depots mentioned, the Railroad Depot, the Passenger Depot.
That's the same thing.
It's the same building.
Same building. Okay, then, two figures were given. One figure was $90,000, the other was $95,000, which is...
$95,000.
$95,000.
On Giles Garage, I don't know for sure. The reason why we get some of these buildings, it's been referred to as we get these white elephant buildings. Just all remember it was a garage. That's all I'm saying. I don't know what happened there, why we got it, what would have to be done to clean up the site, but it could be, it could be expensive.
Baggage.
No, it could be expensive.
Liability, some liability.
It's a liability.
With the EPD situation, it being a service nation.
It was. There was oil dump there.
Okay, so we have the appraisals in hand. Bobby, you said you set your budget back in September.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever had to amend your budget before? Do you have an amendment clause?
I don't know.
No. No, we don't, but...
Attorney?
Amending your budgets inherently powers. If you had to amend your budget, if you wanted to amend your budget, you could.
Yeah.
It just depends on the circumstances.
The only building for sale that would affect our budget is the Giles Garage. It's free and clear, and we do get income from it. The others basically go to pay the note, so Giles Garage would affect our budget just a little bit.
Are the other properties on a single note?
Single note, yeah, well...
They're individual notes, is that correct?
Who is it?
There's a note, Sunmark, there's a note on the Austin Theater, there's a note on the Signal Building.
And their Sunmark is a credit?
Yes.
Oh, no, CBNT is one, and Sunmark is the other.
Okay. I wanna get off this track a little bit and ask a question that maybe I ought not ask, but I ought to ask it just for me. Hoping it will help me a little bit as we go through this process. What do we do with the grant?
The rent? The grant? You said the grant or the rest?
Grant funding for the building that we didn't take?
I mean, the Warehouse Depot?
Oh, the warehouse, that's another building that you didn't mention. Of course, the tracks, huh?
The warehouse, yeah.
We don't have the money yet.
But at the same time, that building's free and clear too, right there.
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing old on that.
Did we do with the grant funding? Is that what you said?
Yes, grant funding.
Did we receive that?
No.
We have a grant, but we haven't had a let date yet, and that's when they release the money.
Okay, now, the warehouse is not, you didn't call that out. That's a part of your inventory, right?
Right.
We own the building, but we don't own the land that the building sits on. So that's why they gave us that building.
So it's a building only?
Correct.
Here's some information on that building.
Okay, so you have seven properties in all that you're in charge of?
Seven.
And one is building only, none?
Right.
So what's the agreement on the land? Nine years or something?
No.
No.
We don't own the land. We're told to get that building taken.
You have to move the building.
Right.
It has no value.
No value, okay.
It will cost more than it's worth to leave it.
Okay.
Amen.
Now, which one is that? Is that this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Is that, are we calling that building the warehouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you have any kind of value on that one?
No.
No, okay. But you do have a grant to work with.
To move the property.
Yeah, we do.
That's what I was thinking.
With a lot of...
The total funds for the project is not gonna be contained here.
Not anything.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Okay. Okay, now...
So is the railroad gonna want that building to be destroyed if it's not moved off by a certain time?
Probably, probably, they're gonna give it back if we don't do anything. We'll just give them the building back, and then they can do whatever they're doing. I don't believe they want it at this point.
They don't want it.
It's becoming a structural...
Liability.
Liability at this point.
Right, it's too close to the tracks.
The loopers that have come in and told us that time is of the essence to get this thing. If we're gonna get it moved, it's almost now or never.
Kathy, I have a question. Kathy, you said we hadn't got an answer back from someone to purchase the building?
Yes, the Nina's Beauty. Although, before Christmas, they were going out of business. Now the sign is down, and I don't know what this situation is.
Okay.
Also, that building does connect with the Austin Theater, which is, you know, looking down the road, any future expansion for the Austin Theater would be that Nina's Beauty Supply.
I don't think they should ever do that, because that'd take away from the historic value of the building, because you have to go through that wall where the stairs are at, and it'll take away from it.
So you think that to anticipate expansion would kill the historic integrity of the building?
I don't, it could.
Okay.
But I don't know, because, you know, change the outsides of them. What you do on the inside does not affect the historic value.
Okay, let's stay focused. We're not gonna address the historic value of a building. What we're trying to do is get our note lined up in 2015. I'm gonna ask Attorney Bentley if he would interject for us.
Well, this is the second meeting we've had about this, and I guess, since I'm the attorney and I'm used to doing this, I'll be very direct with you. We are a major creditor, the DDA. The DDA owes $130-some thousand dollars to somebody. It was a bank. We purchased that note because we did not want to serve as a guarantor for a loan forever. We also believe that it was a securitis transaction, inasmuch as the DDA was receiving its funding at that time, half from the city, half from the utility commission. We did not want to continue to pay interest at the rate that was being required by the bank. When we met in August, you asked for additional time to come up with a plan to liquidate assets to get this loan cleared. There were quarter annual payments, I believe, on the note, and I believe that Pat asked, well, we were making quarter annual payments to the DDA for the budget, and there was interest and principal due on the loan. Pat wanted to swap checks, and that met with resistance from the DDA, which I understand because we had not talked about that in advance. But from our auditing standpoint, from the standpoint of the utility commission, this note either needs to be written off as a bad debt, which will affect your credit, meaning that when you go to borrow money in the future, you're gonna show a bad debt that you didn't pay, because we have to be paid, essentially. So, what we're asking for at this point is to not look at us as an arm of the city or of the county, but as a creditor, and come up with some plan to collateralize this. You've shown, you've given us two properties today that are free and clear. I could ask my board if they're satisfied with taking first lien position on those two properties. And at that point, the issue is, is how would you repay the debt? Annual installments, which would allow you to put off an installment until after your budget year for next year, I could certainly recommend that to the utility commission board, but not doing anything is not an option for the utility commission. You know, we're either gonna have to sue on this note, which we do not want to do, write it off, give it to the city, or find a way to amortize this loan. It's just that simple. We're here to work with you, we don't want to, we wanna do it in a friendly way, but we would prefer to take collateral for the loan. We would prefer to be paid at least on a quarter annual basis, but if that causes operational hardship for the DDA, we certainly understand that. We could take the interest out of it possibly sometime in the fall, but we can't sit here with an unsecured loan, given all the other things that you guys have going on. We want to be treated just like any other creditor. The reason it was unsecured previously was because you had an arm of the government standing behind you as a guarantor with its full faith and credit being pledged, or its revenues being pledged. Now it's a $135,000 unsecured note. So we just want you to tell us, after your meeting tomorrow night, if you guys wanna go into executive session if possible, to discuss how you wanna do it. if you guys want to go into executive session if possible to discuss how you want to do it, that's fine with us, we're not making a demand for it to be paid today or anytime in the immediate future. You know, we advertised this out over a significant period of time, we're not in any rush to get paid. We just want to be paid at some point and protected.
And it's, and it's a business, it's a business situation, quite frankly. It, it, in our auditing situation, we just, we just need to be about business, how we, how we look in the audit. And right now, and we don't want to make our community look bad by saying it's a bad debt.
Yeah.
If at all possible. It's a working situation, it's a work in progress, but at the same time, it's a business work in progress. I recognize Commissioner Black.
I, I wanted to ask, what was the amount that DDA was paying to the bank four times a year? What did it?
Eleven thousand five hundred and fifty.
So a total of forty-fourth?
Twenty, about twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
You were paying twenty-three thousand dollars a year?
Twice a year, just twice.
Twice, okay.
Yeah, eleven, twice.
Eleven thousand twice, so twenty-two thousand dollars. Well, if I remember correctly, the utility commission was giving to the DDA in support, twenty thousand dollars a year, is that correct? What was it?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five?
If I'm not mistaken, it went to thirty-five.
All right, so it would, the utility commission was essentially paying that debt.
Half of it. The annual budget was twenty-five. It then went, it was increased to thirty-five, which was essentially half of the annual payment.
And of course.
That's what I'm saying, the money that, that you were paying.
You could say it all came, right.
It was all coming.
Because we got funding from the city as well.
But you can, but you, you look back, years passed before we, before we had this note, we did get that same support, twenty-five thousand dollars for, I believe, eight or nine years, well, since I came there. And when I came, there was no note, and yet the utility company gave twenty-five thousand dollars. I cut our budget at the Trotman House tremendously. Right. To make up for this payment. So a year or so ago, we increased it, ten thousand dollars. Which helped this payment only. Which was, right, so, I mean, it's just, it boils down to the fact that it's the people who pay their utility bills every month that are, that are paying this money. And it, and it's just kind of nuts to me to, you know, keep on with this. I, I feel like that in a way, we're sort of badgering the DDA over something that you all really, that was, the original note was something that you were almost pressured into, to entering into. And now here we are beating you all over the head to come up with money that you don't have, that we had been, you know, giving you to pay for it. You were not in default of the debt because, in the sense that you were making the payments. No matter where the money came from, you were making the payments, so you were not in default. When the utility commission decided that we no longer wanted to serve as the guarantor of this loan, that essentially put you in default because you had no other way to guarantee the loan. It's just, I mean, it's, you, you call it a securitas situation, and it is a securitas situation, and it's like we're all, I mean, it's ours, it's all of ours, it's not just the DDA's. It's, it's ours, and we just need to figure out what we're going to do to take care of it so that the people who pay utility bills don't get stuck, so that the DDA can continue its business that, that it's chartered to do, I guess we have a charter, which is to improve the, the economics of our city. We don't need to be hamstringing anybody. We just need to do whatever it is that we need to do so that we collectively, I mean, this was the utility commission's decision to enter into that debt too, originally. I think, I wasn't on the, the commission at that time, but I believe that, that the utility commission voted to guarantee this loan. Well, we have a certain responsibility there. And I just think that we need to look at all of our responsibility and just figure out something that's going to be best, you know, in the long run for the people of this town.
And that's why we're here today together, Commissioner Black, is to do exactly that. Because we are all aware of the fact that we all made this agreement, in one body and support of the other. But at the same time, we, when we offered, I believe, back in, earlier in the, in the past year, later in the past year now, the way the DDA was paying the bank, I think, I think it was just off the record, I don't want to make it a part of the record, but I think it was at, at some point stated, why don't we just swap checks? Instead of the commission, you know, advancing the money, maybe since we are giving the money, why don't we just take that money and apply it to the note? That was kind of off the record, but it was a thought, at one and support of the other. But at the same time, we're, we're all in this together, you're absolutely right. But we're all put in the positions that we're in, by the people and for the people, so that we can make the best decisions on behalf of the people. And I think the people would not look well upon us if we have a situation that's caused a hiccup over on our budget and releasing the hiccups on another budget. We need to put it plain and clear that we have an unsecured note that was secured at one time at the bank and was being paid at the bank. And we're, we're asking not to be put on indefinite unsecured hold. We don't mind being put on hold while appraisals or whatever else of properties are being sold. What we're saying is so that we can handle our business in a businesslike manner at the utility commission. Tell us what we're going to do, go to your meeting and decide how you're going to handle this business matter, and then come back to us and let us know. But we do want to make it clear that it is a business matter, and it needs to be handled in a businesslike and timely fashion. It's just lingering longer now. You know, we haven't had any, any, everybody's budget year closed in, in September thirtieth, and that was a dangling note in our, in our budget, looked like a bad debt. We didn't want our city and our DDA to look like it had a bad debt. So we're working now to avoid having that happen.
With all due respect, the utility commission created that situation.
The utility commission didn't find, didn't find it feasible to be paying that high rate of interest and on an interest-only note when the principal needed to be paid.
But we were paying, so we went from a hundred and eighty down to one thirty-seven.
Right, we're aware of that.
So it's not like we were just not paying anything.
So I guess then that leads us to where we are right now. Why not keep doing that now, the way you were handling that Sunmark Bank? It seemed to have gotten idle when it came to utility.
Actually, no, we're not idle. Our next payment wouldn't be due to February first.
A six-month plan?
Six months, that's how we paid it.
Okay, we'll see there.
My last payment was August.
August?
All right, May, all right. That was for the back payment, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, we would have been due another payment, so.
Excuse me one minute, yes, the payments were due every six months, they were due in November, and they were due in May. The May payment was not made when, when the balloon note was not.
Renewed.
Renewed by Sunmark Bank. The May payment was then paid to the utility commission several months later. So, so the next scheduled payment would have been November. And it would be semi-annually, November and May. And, and for the record, I acted on behalf of the utility commission, which reached a unanimous consensus in the month of September for the check for eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which was twenty-five percent of your annual budget. I was directed to ask the Downtown Development Authority if we could swap checks. Bobby and I had a very cordial conversation in my office, and we just couldn't reach an agreement on that.
Question, is there any thing in y'all's two thousand fifteen budget for the repayment of, is there anything, any interest, any principal, anything in y'all's budget this year towards that repayment or not?
We could, we could make some payments, because like I said, I've cut a lot of expenses at the Trotman House. But then again, looking forward on my budget, I'm losing Mr. Sims from upstairs. And I have a non-pay, I have Peach Festival that owes us ninety-two hundred dollars in bad debt. We have bad debt as well. So if I had that money, I, I would, I'd be able to pay. I could pay now, only because I've cut a lot of operational expenses.
Has, or is the contribution from the utility commission the same?
We don't get a contribution from you.
Okay, is your income the same?
The same.
For two thousand fifteen as it was for two thousand fourteen?
It's the same.
It's my understanding, and if I'm incorrect, maybe Pat or someone could help, it's my understanding that the utility commission over the years has paid into the city budget, or, or, let's go to the city budget directly for the DDA, twenty-five thousand dollars. It didn't stop. And this past year, it added ten thousand dollars to that.
Last year.
This past, twenty fourteen. Now, if, if that, and, 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 we don't know how you expand your budget. That, that's, that's not really a part of our, our dream. Our dream is, at this point, and we, and, 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 Bobby, I think when we pull that note, interest, interest, we were, we were seeing interest only for a long time. The best thing for us was, was to, since you're going to get this budget, your twenty-five thousand didn't stop, you're getting ten thousand dollars more. We thought we were making it a lot easier for that to keep going on, that was happening at Sunmark Bank. What we saw was it, almost was a cease and desist situation. And we were just trying to keep that note alive and payable, it's due. It, it's just that your, it's just that your lenders, and we don't want to call it that, but it's the same as though Sunmark Bank were holding that note. You wouldn't go this long at Sunmark Bank, they would have already done something about that note. What we're saying is y'all treat us just like you would the Sunmark Bank. We didn't change in what we were doing for, for DDA, we gave ten thousand more instead. And so let's work together to make it a reasonable situation. We're not, we're not acting like the Sunmark Bank in the sense that if you had been these many months behind in that note, they would have called and we would have still had to pay it off. Because we were the guarantors.
Or you had the option to renew it.
Oh, we would have had the option to renew it. And, and what we're saying is, just treat us in the same manner and make payments to us. We're not wanting to own buildings that the DDA needs to own. We're just asking that you get a collateralized note. We don't have a, a, a signature line for anybody, the city or the, or the other commission. So collateralize it with a property that's reasonable and, and valuable and start paying the note. That's all we're asking, I believe at this point.
I think, well, I'm hearing two different stories. When you called the note, it was we were told to get rid of our buildings. There was no mention of continued repayment to you. We, I, I still have this money, I could do it, I could have made a payment. But if, the plan was to liquidize our bill, our buildings and, and get them sold. So now I'm hearing a different proposal.
No, we didn't propose to you how to do your business, what we were saying, those were options on the table. You choose how you do your business to pay the note.
Well, as the lender, now you're the lender, then you have terms for repayment. And I think today is the first time you're asking for different terms on the repayment process.
You know, I think that's right, I can, I can understand.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not following it, I'm not understanding, so y'all help me understand.
In May, when you paid off the note, you didn't come back with another set of terms for us to say, I want you to continue to repay us the same.
Just make a plan.
Right, just come up, just for us to come up with a plan.
Exactly, I follow that now, yes.
Now, today, you're telling us to maybe go into some repayment-type plan now, as of today.
That's just an option, and that's what you choose to do.
No, that's what you were, that's what you just said that we should do.
Well, no, what, what we're saying is.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to be, Bobby, I don't want to be confusing to you. What I want to do is make myself clear to you on behalf of all of us, not just Dolly Hoyle, not just the utility commission, but all of us. We're in this together, and what I'm saying is, let's, let's come together on what's the best way for you to handle this. We're not going to be strapped because you don't do it today, but what I'm saying is, don't just, you know, time is a factor, time and money, okay? But time is the investment that we can't recapture. Now, from last May till today, has been a lot of time. And if, if we, if we continue to move at that pace, then we'll get another situation in another year, and we'll be back at the same situation. What I'm saying, Bobby, is let's work on what we're going to do. And I'm not changing a plan, I'm suggesting that you give us a concrete plan, collateralizing, giving some timelines on it, and let's do it.
Selling property, there is no timeline on that.
I, I, I don't, I don't got that.
Yeah, so, and we're stuck. I mean, we're, we're an arm of the city, the city and utility has been gracious to fund us. Without those fundings, we're, we're not a board, we're not an entity at all. Unfortunately, we get properties dumped in our lap that we have to manage and maintain. All right, so what do we do with that? Well, now, we're having a loan that's, all of a sudden now has got to be repaid, that had been being paid back. So now, that loan situation has changed for the DDA. So now, the new lender is asking for a different payment process than what we had with our previous lender. And I have no problem with that. And today is, is, is you're stating to us that you would like for us to continue doing payments the way we did with Sunmark, is what I gather.
As an option, I think.
Those are options.
Sure.
The options that our attorney gave to you at the beginning, will you restate those?
There's no need to do that, we know what those options are.
Re, give us some kind of plan, pledge property as, as collateral, recollateralize the loan, give us, give us a plan for repayment. You had that with Sunmark, you had that with us.
Do you have an idea of where our payments would be?
We're, we're totally open to your, to your suggestion. We're not saying you need to pay us.
Let's meet.
We're talking about this.
Yeah, I was going to say, this, this is just to be sure that when you go to your board meeting, you know that we're looking for something other than idling along, hoping somebody will buy according to our terms when we get the right money. It just kind of felt like that to me. Because an appraisal from, from last May till now could have been done a long time ago if that had been pursued, in my personal opinion. Call an appraisal, get appraisal work done, more action, more timely was what I was looking for, from where I sit. But to say that it had to happen today, we're not seeing that, Bobby.
I understand.
Take it to your board, take the options to the board, let the board tell us. But don't leave us just idling along with this, especially in the light of our point on our, our, our auditorium.
Well, I can promise you, after I meet tomorrow night, we'll have something to give to you after I meet.
I think we're, we're more concerned, not, not so much with how much the payments are and when they're made, is having the loan collateralized and put on some schedule for past purposes for, for, you know, for the books.
For the, for the record, for years, the utility commission, through aid to other government for economic development. for economic development reasons for downtown Fort Valley, provided you with twenty-five thousand dollars. In the budget year of two thousand fourteen, the Utility Commission graciously increased that by ten thousand dollars, for a total of thirty-five. And, and written in between the lines in the budget was, this is economic help, help you pay the note at Sunmark Bank. In two thousand and fifteen, for our budget year, the Utility Commission decided, and primarily upon the advice of our legal counsel, to get out of the aid to other government business. Because we, we helped other entities with economic development besides the Downtown Development Authority. So, the Utility Commission in the two thousand fifteen budget took an eighty-five thousand dollar aid to other government, increased it to a hundred thousand dollars. And, and the payment goes to the city of Fort Valley, twenty-five thousand dollars a quarter for the purpose of aid to other governments, economic development in, in downtown Fort Valley with no strings attached. The city may spend that hundred thousand dollars any way they want to. Hopefully, you still got your thirty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen.
We did.
Good.
Can, the November note, do you have money for that?
Yes.
How much was that?
It'll be eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So we have that, can we pay that to the Utility Commission?
We're talking about that tomorrow.
That would be up to the board, I'm not saying I. It could affect other things in the budget, so we have to examine that.
We'll, we'll discuss that tomorrow night, if I know what I think.
Reason why I'm asking is that, the Utility Commission is saying that treat us, treat them as Sunmark. I mean, it's no difference that it is Sunmark, make the payment if we have it in the budget. If we still had the money in the budget, we still was going to pay in November. So why would it be different paying the Utility Commission being that they are the guarantor of the loan?
Technically, the loan has expired. And it has, it's been held by the Utilities Commission. And so, this is the time whether you were with Sunmark or with Utilities Commission, that the loan would be renegotiated. And what the Utilities Commission is asking in order to clear their audit item is that it be renegotiated with fixed terms and they're asking for the collateralization. I don't think that's a difficult process and quite frankly, I think there may be a beneficial reason to do that for, for the DDA. So y'all just need to meet and I can give you a suggestion or two that may help.
You can be there tomorrow night.
I'll be glad to, if you want me to.
Good, very good, that's what Bob's saying.
I've got a question I want directed at Pat. And I'm, I'm not speaking for anybody other than myself on the Utility Commission when I ask the question. From a legal or from a financial perspective, Pat, could the Utility Commission accept some payment arrangement from DDA, interest free? Or, or because of, and my question more specifically is, are you forced financially or legally to charge interest on that amount of money?
Okay. I, alright, I think there's three parts to my answer. I, I think that Joel needs to answer or address the, the legal part of this. The second part of the answer would be that the, I think the Utility Commission may collectively agree to accept what other, whatever terms of repayment that satisfies them as a body from the Downtown Development Authority, whether it's principal only, interest only, principal and interest balloon payment, what, whatever the imagination can come up with, which will, and which will satisfy the, the collective body of the Utility Commission. And, and then the third part of that is, is, is no. From an accounting standpoint, there's no restrictions on what, what the transaction looks like. The accounting responsibility would, would be to reflect whatever those terms are, to reflect those terms accurately in our financial report, that's all.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I think the.
Any other comments, go ahead.
I think the issue goes to whether it violates the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. And I think as long as it's paid back, it doesn't really constitute a gift. The issue would be whether or not the, the court would construe an interest-free only, interest-free note would be a violation of the gratuities clause. I, I, I would say given the, the interrelations between the three bodies, I, I just don't see the Supreme Court popping us on that. So as long as it's paid back, I don't think we violate the gratuities clause. And I believe that Billy would agree with you there. So yes, we could do an interest free.
That, that, again, I don't want to speak for the Commission, but that could be a little tiny step in good faith to, from the Commission's perspective, if they were so inclined to, to offer something cheaper than, either free or cheaper than you had at Sunmark before, which was I think, six percent.
Well, I think that was always our intention.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that this body's ever heard that, but, okay, well, whatever.
I don't know about interest free.
If we had the money this morning and invested it, we wouldn't be getting much out of it. So, I, I don't see why we need to.
It was always.
We don't need to gouge y'all on the interest rate.
Exactly, I mean, it's like gapping yourself.
If it was, it was always the intention, I believe, of the, of the, of the Commission, to make it easier if we could, but we didn't know exactly what you could do. We didn't, we didn't meet here, I, I met one time, I, I don't even know what we talked about. But I just wanted to make sure that whatever we could do to help, that's what we're willing to do. We just didn't want to be, just left down.
Hanging out.
Hang, hang, hanging out, not knowing and not showing any interest. And it may have come out of my mouth, if you don't have the money to sell the buildings, I'm good to say that. So, I still hold for that. And I'll say it again, you know, do something with the buildings. If you don't have the budget, work what you have, which is your buildings. But in the, at the end of the day, all we're asking, Bobby, is you and Kathy and the body, get together in this room, get together, tell us what it is that you can do and you would like for us to help you get done as a business process. That's all. Because we don't want ever to make our DDA, our Main Street, our city or our commission look like we support bad debts. No, we don't support bad debts. We don't want it to show up like that, we don't want it to happen like that. We do want it to look like a business transaction, realistically carried out and executed in a timely fashion, that's all. And that's the real purpose of this meeting. And we knew that you were meeting tomorrow. We asked for this meeting today, so you would go to your meeting tomorrow with a clear understanding of what it is we are looking for. And however we can help cause that to happen, we'll be happy to do it. Because all of us are paying at this, at this point.
Not to make any excuses, time delays, but we have pretty much a brand new board that had to be educated on what, what DDA had. Number two was we were hit with the Austin Theater bad debt. So, we, we ourselves are trying to dig out a hole of, from operations of other buildings as well. And to have a new board and get them on board and vote to do these appraisals. And working with an appraisal, I mean, I wasn't on, first on his schedule either. So, I mean, I, I think we did our plan in a timely manner. Although I did have money that I probably could have made a payment, had you all wanted a payment.
We'll take it today. On a serious note, Kathy, let me be the first to say that I am very much aware of the hard work that goes into the work that you do. Being certified in downtown development, that's no easy task, I understand. The other thing I want to be the first to say is that we appreciate all that we see going on. I, I want to brag a little bit, every day in the months of, since Thanksgiving or the week before Thanksgiving, I couldn't park on Main Street. Something good must have been happening downtown. The Austin Theater was lit up, the streets were packed, people were roaming around, you know, in the daytime. And that was the time I sat at the Evans Building and I could see all the way to Perry because there weren't no cars. So I want to be the first to say in this body, somebody is working in Main Street, DDA, the city and the utilities to make some things happen, because nobody's down there in the dark. So, we're all in this together. And I want you to know it's very much noticed and very much appreciated. To the point that people call, what's going on downtown? That's a good thing.
Absolutely.
That's a good thing.
Madam Chair, I want to insert something that is not necessarily for discussion on this meeting, but I, I think in this setting, I, I do need to emphasize that I am displeased because a baby grand Yamaha piano has turned up missing from the Austin Theater and has been moved out to a private residence to have control over the use of it. And when we have events, we are making no effort to get the piano back. I'm displeased because of that. City had to expend nine hundred dollars to rent a piano for a Christmas event, Christmas party that we had, when we, there is already a piano that should have been there. And so, I'm displeased with that and I just, I just want to know, don't drop the ball on that one either, if you would.
Alright, now, since we have a quorum with the Utility Commission, I'm going to bring to the floor the opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to consider. Do we want to consider just making it an interest-free loan and to help them out that much? We don't have, as long as we don't violate attorney, y'all don't let it come out of my mouth. I don't want to be in violation of any state regulation. But can we do this loan interest-free for them? And if, if so, this would be a good time to go ahead, so they can go into their meeting tomorrow night knowing that we are in favor of helping them as much as we can and at least take that much off of the burden of the note is, is to take the interest off. Can we legally do that? Y'all think so?
I have, I have one little issue I'd like to talk to the city attorney, but subject to satisfaction between him and myself, I have no option, I, I'll issue with it.
And if, if it comes out, Dan, before I say this, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I think we're, we're headed, definitely headed in the right direction and I strongly believe that the DDA will have some serious conversations about, about this tomorrow night. And I believe the Utility Commission is making wonderful good faith in the offerings that we do. I would suggest that we see what the DDA comes up with tomorrow night and take action at, at that time at our next get-together.
Okay. What, where were that, good suggestion?
Well, we might could at least say by consensus, even if we don't vote on it right now, that by consensus, we certainly would be, if we have a consensus of, of that.
Well, we're in a regular meeting.
Right.
And so we can have the initiatives we want to right now.
Exactly, but I think it'd be prudent to wait and see what DDA.
What they come up with. But, but, and that's a good idea. I just kind of thought that it would be a little easy on them if they at least knew that we were talking about no interest, you know, let's just pay the principal or however we come up with whatever plan, at least it would be without tacking on additional interest. If we could give them that privilege.
I think we understand.
You understand, okay. We would be willing to look at it if, if that's, if that's, if that's going to help it in any way, alright? Make sense? Okay, anything else for the good of this meeting?
I've got a, so background questions, it's been a while and I haven't been following this continuously. The original, the project that caused this whole problem, what was that again? The failed project?
May I, may I answer that, please?
Okay, go ahead. I finance, man, is it?
Joel's got it as well.
The. The Utility Commission was originally asked to guarantee the payment of the architectural fee for the renderings necessary for Fort Valley State University to submit a project to the Board of Regents for the future use of the old Fort Valley High School as a building for Fort Valley State University for an MBA program or something of that nature. The Board of Regents could not effectively consider the project without renderings. The architect would not provide the renderings without guarantee of payment. So the original guarantee that the Utility Commission made on behalf of the Downtown Development Authority was if the Board of Regents does not fund the project, then the Utility Commission will guarantee that the architectural fee be paid. And the original amount of that architectural fee was approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, from that beginning, there were several steps to get to where we are today. But that was the original economic development commitment that was made and in my opinion, very graciously by the Fort Valley State Department.
Oh seven or oh eight?
I believe so. And Bobby's shaking his head and Kathy's shaking her head and, and I, and Bob was the chairman in, in that meeting when, when that happened. And Dolly, you were vice chairman in that meeting when it happened and.
It actually was not an unlimited guarantee.
It had a timeframe on it. And that was the only reason I probably approved it. I would have voted no, had it not had a very definite timeframe. And that's been one of my major concerns, because the timeframe kept going and kept going and kept renewing. And you, you understand, but my original plan was it would happen when it said it would happen and, and so.
Well, I heard too that, and I came along a lot later than, than that, but I heard an individual say that not one penny of utility, of customers' money would ever go to repay that loan. And here we are, and Utility Commission customers are on the hook where an individual said, I heard this individual say it twice, not one penny of Utility Commission customers' money would ever go to repay that loan.